Yes.
Awesome. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, it's not over soon.
Waiting for it to connect to our live stream.
Will you tell me when you're ready?
The. Best one.
I didn't know your brother was down in Book Day, so he's old, you've been there about two years.
Been all of that, I think, yeah. I think I'm, I'm good.
Okay. You had to go to this, like, you're good.
But you'll eventually into. This is the United States of America and two republics which stands one nation under our indivisible, with everything and everything for our.
Okay, um. We might as well start off with the meeting minutes for August fourth.
And I just have one comment, Neil pointed out that we had we got the Bill Teal's name or Bill Morgner's name wrong, it says Bill Teal. It's been updated to Bill Morgner, so the copy that Leslie has has that all fixed, so. Any other changes?
I'll make a motion to accept them as amended.
Second?
Oh, second head. We got double second.
Those are favor. All those calls. Okay, now on the home business, I have a quick question, Mike, I mean, don't. Write me on this. Uh, Standby Road, they've actually put that off this year. Third time?
I think this will be the third time.
The third time. Uh, are they redesigning it?
I don't think so, I think that. Uh, they haven't. They did say they want their, pull into some more information. Uh, specifically around like trainations, some of the concerns that have come up in the site visit and the um, the last planning meeting they were at, I don't bet there's a major overhaul, so.
I just wondered.
Yeah.
We might have to review the whole thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, you know, so. My only question. Uh, new business is the Piper Mill Coastal Rivers Application Land Use and Site Plan Review for a walk-in bath.
Is that you? That would be me. So, my name's Jim Grenier, I'm Trails and Facilities Manager with Coastal Rivers Conservation Trust. And we recently, um, after reviewing the ordinance of Michael, now there's a section in the ordinance which states anything, any disturbance, soil disturbance over five thousand square feet needs to go before the planning board for a site plan review. So. We're going to be looking to put in a nine hundred and sixty foot, right now nine hundred and sixty foot accessible trail. Be a five foot wide accessible trail. Over there on Piper Mill Road on the Castner Brook Community Forest property. That will, um, it'll be an out and back trail to Castle Brook. Right now, we're staying seventy-five feet away from the Brook. Um, and just building out the main section of trail. The next section will require a bridge that we're in the process of raising funds for. So until we're ready to pull the trigger on that and purchase a bridge or build a bridge. Um, we're just staying seventy-five feet back from Castner Brook with the trail. So it's overall width. The finished surface will be five foot and it will be a three eighths minus crushed stone surface. And the base of the trail will be approximately seven feet. So, and the construction will be subbase, base, top coat, actual treadway. The subbase would be four inch minus compacted gravel. The base would be inch and a half minus compacted gravel and then the treadway would be the three eighths minus crushed on dust.
So it's like a road?
Hmm, it is. Yep.
Is it, is it along the path of the existing road?
Uh, right now, if you're familiar with where the logging road went in to the Castner Brook property. And they used it for a little while for snowmobile trail.
Yeah.
It's following that old roadway.
Is that bridge going over on the trail that we used to snow sled on?
Exactly.
Yeah, it, it.
They, they went out every other year.
Yeah.
Yeah, where the old stone bridge used to be is where the new bridge will eventually be built. Um, but like I said, for right now, until we can raise the, the funds to, to purchase the materials or purchase a pre-built bridge. We're, we're gonna hold off on that portion of the trail. The accessible trail piece will only be to the other side of Castner Brook. The rest of the trail system will be, you know, an actual native soil trail system on the other side. So that won't be a constructed trail, it'll be a cleared trail, but it won't be a constructed trail on the other side of the Brook.
So safe to assume that this is gonna be machine work to put that in and erosion control?
Exactly.
Measures will be taken to contain all of that?
Yeah, that's primarily why we're staying seventy-five feet back away from the Brook right now. So we're not, you know, in the impact zone of the Brook. And we can finish, you know, that remaining section, you know, once we, once we put in the bridge. And, yeah, all, you know, soil management practices, BMPs, you know, will be used, there's one wetland impact on the section of trail that we'll be building now. And that called for a twelve inch culvert, and that's right by the parking area, right by the road there. There's, you know, where they put in the ditching for the road drainage, they you know, put some drainage out into the woods. Ahead of that park. And so, a call for a twelve inch culvert. But we're gonna put a thirty inch culvert in there and we're gonna fill it halfway with native soil. So, you know, any amphibians that do wanna cross right there can pass from one side together. They can go over the trail if they want, but we figured why not just give them a underpass as well, so.
So it's, you take down seven feet?
Oh gosh, no. No, no, the trail, the subbase is seven foot, because you've lied.
Oh, why?
Yes.
Why?
Yeah, you gotta, you know, build the surface up to meet that five foot, so it supports your curves. So the base will be seven feet, subbase, base will be six, treadway, five.
And what I'm looking at on, on this page of the application. Uh, this is the second, maybe third page in there that shows the, the layers, it looks like the depth from the top, top of the stone dust to the bottom, the geotexile cloth is gonna be a foot and a half, maybe?
Yeah, depending on topography, because we have to maintain a one and twenty slope on the trail, we, you can go over one and twenty for certain distances and for a percentage of the overall trail length. But we try and keep everything as close to one and twenty as we can. So depending on the topography, we may have to build up, you know, the subbase a little more or use trap rock for under drainage. It's easier and environmentally speaking, better to allow natural water flows to continue their natural path through trap rock rather than putting in culverts.
Right.
That first section. It worked out better to put a culvert in there because it's already a ditch anyway. So it just made sense to do a culvert there. But on the remainder of the trail, we try and leave any natural drainage to do its thing. And avoid culverts when at all possible.
So the parking lot now accommodates what, two cars?
Two cars.
And you're gonna keep it?
Put four in there.
You can, if, if we, if we improve it, I can get four. And, you know, in the future, once we do put the bridge in, we would like to improve it to accommodate a solid four vehicles. But for right now, we have limited dollars through a grant to, to get everything done that we wanna get done on this pass, this round. And then in the future, we'll, we'll do an expansion on the parking lot. Because two isn't quite enough to, and depending on how people park in that spot.
Mm-hmm.
They, they can take up quite a bit of space. So, we'd like to be able to fit four in there eventually to accommodate more visitors.
That was one of my questions was how many parking spaces are there currently, um?
Yeah, you can fit four, but.
Yeah.
It's.
That's, I, I'm putting, there's basically two parking spaces, you, maybe you can get another one or two in there, but then you've got future plans to.
Yep.
Um. Do you guys have any other questions still?
I don't have any questions, I noticed you had a little blurb in there about lighting.
Yes, there, you're not proposing to put any lighting in on this?
Oh, no.
Not right now, yeah.
No, even, uh, yeah, just. So you guys are aware in the future, we're gonna be doing another project. We're gonna be giving an accessible trail from Whaleback, Sheldon over to the Salt Bay Farm.
Right, I thought that was early into production.
It is, we're waiting on the, the final engineering plans on that. We have everything ready to go. But we decided to actually have them engineer the entirety of the trail system.
You better.
Um. Just for bidding purposes.
Mm-hmm.
So everyone's bidding on apples and apples rather than, you know, coming in with their own design specifications. So we have the underpass designed on, they're working on um, boardwalks and bridges, um, because it, it will require fairly ex, you know, extensive, you know, amount of boardwalk. Um, for the wetland crossings and there'll be two or three culverts on that one, um, where it's gonna end up being more practical to do culverts. You know, versus bridging and or boardwalks, the boardwalks are expensive. So, and the bridges are expensive. But, yeah, so right now we acquired all of the properties that we needed to acquire to make it over to the Salt Bay Farm property. And, um, we active miles donated a piece of their property over there by the, the drop-off. They donated a parcel of their property, which I think you guys did the site plan review last year for. So, we, we have all of our properties squared away, we have all of our DOT permitting done. Our, you know, MOUs with DOT, Bureau of Parks and Lands and IFNW, because IFNW owns that parcel on the other side of Route One.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that abuts the graveyard on Route One.
Yeah.
Up to the Wheeler property. So, and, you know, we acquired, you know, that site plan review last year was included that Wheeler property on that whole subdivision to fix the problem with the Miles property. I believe there was a, an issue where that never went, the Miles property never actually went through a site plan review, from what I understand, and so you guys took care of that last year.
Yeah, I think it was subdivision issue back there, that, that's what.
Yep. Yeah, and we needed to gain a right of way to be able to get materials in through Miles for the construction of that trail. So, yeah, so that'll, that'll be another upcoming project. Our goal is to try and have two accessible trails for a service town. So, good?
If anybody else has any questions?
I.
You know, pretty.
Any reason we can't act on this?
Well, the only other thing I wanted to mention sounds, so this is Castner Creek, eh, part of it is in the flood plain. But it sounds like you're staying outside of the flood plain, is that, at least with what you're proposing right now?
Yeah, we're staying seventy-five feet away from Castle Brook right now, just so we don't have to deal with that until the time comes. Once we figure out abutments, bridge line, and what we're gonna need for materials to build that bridge. We're hoping we can do that is, you know, an engineered wood bridge just for aesthetics, but we may have to do an aluminum bridge on that. And there's quite a cost discrepancy between the two. So, until we we should be, we should find out within the next two weeks, what the engineers came up with on that design.
Like, there's a seventy-five followed in our, uh, rigs?
The, you know, I, I think the, the general will wanna discuss, well, there's a couple things, one, for flood plain, uh, I don't believe, it's a very irregular shape where the flood plain actually is around this, but I don't, I think at least seventy-five feet. If you stay seventy-five feet within the stream, I don't think you're gonna.
This particular spot, the, the crossing, the reason why there was a crossing there is because it maybe is narrow.
Right, right, so.
That's a narrowous location.
Um, the other is, um, shoreline zoning, which none of this, from all, from from my review, none of this falls into shoreline zoning. There are some, uh, depending which map you look at, there are some small or large wetlands. Um, I know you're kind of dealing with some of them and you are going through, I think, well, certainly where the, the culvert is near the road. But it's all wetlands that are too small compared to, and you, and you can see them on, on some of the maps. Yeah. There it's a weird.
I'm real familiar with that.
Yeah, it's a weird network back there, but the minimum. The maximum size of a wetland that is not regulated is ten acres, so unless the wetland is ten acres or more, shoreline zoning doesn't apply.
Yeah, and, and I found that deeply disturbing, that shoreline zoning did not apply to Casner Creek, but the thing is NERP does, you know, the Natural Resources Protection Act, and mass is seventy-four, seventy-five foot.
Exactly, that's why we're staying at seventy-five.
Yeah, I, I just, when I was looking at the whole, I kind of went back to the shoreline zone ordinance and, you know, rolled my eyes when I looked at the map. Cause it's lots of dots and dashes and it's totally disconnected. And you have all these wetlands that are protected and then you'll have, because in our ordinance it says you have to have two perennial streams have to come together and form another stream, it's a way of, of, of so that we're not, we're not putting shoreline zoning on every little trickle you know, of water, because it has to be a certain size. So I understand the purpose of that, but what it is, is you, then you suddenly have all these isolated sections of Casner Creek. Sections of wetlands that are connected to Casner Creek. And from a, as we get into, um, this climate change environment that we're in, and we're getting big floods of water.
That's right.
Um. A lot more, a lot more rain, heavy rain events and stuff. All these smaller streams are going to become more significant in handling the floodwaters basically of our area, so. Not now, but at some point, we need to look at the maps, we need to see what other towns around here are doing, like Newcastle, I noticed. Had a different, had the same definition for a stream as we did, but they put one more sentence. Um, that actually was kind of brilliant, I thought. I mean, maybe it could be worded a little more clearly, but it, it just mentions that, um, the shoreline zoning also connects all wetlands that, that drain into streams that drain into, you know, other. It, it was this, this sentence that allowed the shoreline zoning to connect things. And when you look at their maps, there's a lot of connection between areas and our maps are just full of dots and dashes. But we don't need to get into it, but I'm just saying that in the future, we might wanna take a look at our shoreline zoning definitions and maps.
In regards to streams?
Streams, and, and even looking at wetlands.
Yeah.
Just because, like I say, things are really changing in terms of the water load that's happening to all these wetlands and these streams, I mean, is that?
Oh, without a, I mean. Yeah, the, part of the reason why we're trying to conserve the two inland corridors of the two peninsulas is those wetland complexes are the sinks to take this water in, and we've seen what happens when, you know, they reach capacity. And, you know, those culverts that, you know, fifty years ago were properly sized are no longer sized to handle the releases from those upland woodland, you know, wetland complexes, so. It's, I, I also sit on my town of Somerville's planning board, I'm the vice chair. And that's one thing that's constantly coming up now is, you know, we, we don't have a lot of protections you know, for these wetland complexes. And, you know, we, we actually had one that really heavy rain event last fall. We had three beaver dams, three large, you know, impoundments. The first impoundment dam let loose, it hit the second impoundment. That finally gave way, it, it, the third, and I can't even fathom the number of gallons that hit that third dam and it blew that third dam out. And it was a torrent and the, the damage it did you know, to that, you know, stream. On, it was on Hoover Road, the route, road I live on. And generally, those beaver dams are supposed to be the, you know, the relief systems for those wetland complexes, and it's great that the beavers are moving in to these wetlands because they are creating these impoundments which are able to retain more water. But, um.
That happens.
They're disconnected, you know, we, we, we treat them as they're disconnected. But they really are connected to all these ephemeral streams and, you know, smaller wet, because let's face it, everything drains down you know, to you know, our larger tributaries. You know, whether it feeds Damascota Lake, whether it feeds, you know, Castner into, you know, Damascota River or what have not, it all eventually makes it to, you know, our ponds, lakes and ocean, so. I do agree with you, there, we, we don't often look at the connection. This Castner Brook, if you look at that wetland complex back there, you know, I don't know if you are all aware, we purchased the Hump property.
Yeah.
And, you know, upper and lower, on, on, you know, the Hump property, that's, that's interconnected to this wetland complex. So they're, they're all part of the same complex, they're disconnected, but, you know, that water eventually makes its way, you know, to the next wetland complex. So. And that Castner Brook property that also has, I don't know if any of you are familiar with the old mill that was on that right behind, you know, now. And.
There used to be a big shingle mill back there.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. Part of the dam still there.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly, which is blocking passage. But, that's, that's another.
For smelts?
Yeah.
Yeah, but how far up to smelt really go?
Well, it all depends on, right now, they, they pretty much only make it up to the dam because they need the gravel, you know, that gravel bed, that fine, you know, small pebble gravel bed for their spawning. And the best section is just up past Castner, you know, the Brook on Church Street there.
Yeah.
That section, that probably seventy-five yard section up above there is the best spawning area for them, but other areas have been silted in.
Yeah.
So.
When, when Sam whatever his name was. He, he did a smelt survey of the Damascota River, you know, of this whole watershed and, and looked at all the streams and stuff. Looked at egg, you know, deposits and stuff.
Yep.
Um. He, he didn't go up too far into the streams, but that's why I just mentioned.
Yeah, it's actually, I mean, surprisingly, I used to dip smelt, you know, down on Castner Brook and on more than one occasion, I ended up dipping a brook trout out, so that, that historically had held brook trout.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any still in there, but I hope there is.
They're all she runs anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. But yeah. All right.
Right.
Back to business.
That, so, how, should we, uh, vote that the application is complete?
So, yeah, I think, uh, let me just get back down to the bottoms here, um. I think the, well, actually, I think the first thing to do is to, um, consider granting waivers. The, I'll tell you what, what waiver I found that looked like they were necessary. Uh, stormwater, stormwater management plan, uh, soil test pit log. Um, districts in the National Register of Historic Places, demonstration of financial and technical capacity. Um, districts and then National Register of Historic Places, demonstration of financial and technical capacity. Phosphorus impact report and a plan for supplying fire protection. I felt like, given this project, those, I mean, I guess not you really, but those seemed like they were reasonable enough that I would bring them to you. Is there any?
There's no subject, there's no.
Yeah.
That's right.
Well, that's why I figured.
So is it a waiver or not applicable? I think you've been through this before.
It's not applicable.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, it doesn't, the the way the ordinance, it doesn't really say when stuff is or is applicable, so, I I think. E- either way, they get the same.
I would rather say it's not applicable.
Really, we don't mean to have waivers for. Um, and then, so, uh, what the, actually, what I can say is. For the National Register of Historic Places, they did get a letter, they submitted a letter to. Tell you exactly who it went to. Uh, Maine State Historic Preservation Commission, and they did respond, I mean, it was boilerplate on on the. Historic Preservation Commission, but they said concluded that we know no historic property is affected by the proposed undertaking. So, they did say that, um. The demonstration of financial and technical capacity. That I feel like is applicable, but. I did, I mean.
If they were building buildings.
That's what I mean.
I would be saying that, yeah, probably wasn't applicable, this particular. Situation. I mean, if they build half that trail.
Right.
They built half of that trail.
And it's not like.
What's the cost of that trail, you know?
Well. Thankfully, through. An anonymous donor, they gave us a donation to buy the equipment, so now we do all of the trail construction in-house. So, we do all of our own work now. So, it's pretty much just the cost of the material and the cost of the materials about. A thousand and change.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's which are the relative weights?
So let's say that's not not applicable.
Not applicable, that's, okay, that's, I just wanna make sure at least we we cover them, however you want. And it's fine.
Can I make a motion that all those?
That those sections are either not applicable or, yeah, or just are not applicable.
I second that.
All in favor?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All those opposed?
Okay, now for the application being complete.
So, yeah, now I think in light of that.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion that the application is complete.
Have a second?
Sure.
Okay, and all those in favor?
All of both.
Okay.
So, the next two more, one is that the. Uh, to conclude that the application to construct the nine hundred and sixty linear fee. Um, is consistent with the Damascotta Site Plan Review Ordinance. I think that would just should be one motion, and the other one is that it's consistent with the site plan. Um, there, that is consistent with the land use. Uh. These stairs, the site plan review ordinance, which you would have just voted on. Um, and outdoor recreation passive, so in order. Why don't we, I I'll play it in a second, but why don't you vote whether or not this meets the site plan review ordinance criteria?
Make a motion?
I make a motion that this plan meets all the criteria of the site plan review.
Have a second? A second, all in favor? All of both.
Okay, so in, now that that, go through that, in the land use ordinance. There's three criteria that they, that this conditional use has to meet, one is that it means articles one through eight of the land use ordinance, which. We we had gone through, I didn't see anything in that there was an issue, a lot of it is just, is it allowed in this district, um. Yeah, this doesn't mean the land use ordinance, the other one is that it needs a site plan review ordinance, which you just said it does, and the third one is that. The proposed outdoor recreation passive use, uh, will not have an adverse effect on the health, safety, or general welfare of the residents. Uh, of the area or the general public. So those three things would basically make, if you said fake yes on all of those, I would say that it is consistent with the land use ordinance. Those are the criteria.
Okay. I make motion that this application is consistent with the. Blah 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 blah.
Yeah, the ordinance, which and specifically those three criteria.
The regional land use.
Yes, as outlined in the conclusion of law.
Yeah, that.
Alright.
That's a good idea.
That sounds pretty. Alright.
Have a second?
And a second.
All those in favor? All those approved?
Um, the only, the last thing would just be to approve it, my only question I'm at is, are there any conditions we want to attach for this? None came up in my.
No.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
A straight approval.
Thank you.
Make a motion. To approve it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Okay. Now we're done.
Jenny, I appreciate your concern over what I'm calling access.
Yeah, and I think it's definitely something.
I'm kind of looking into it and I'm gonna write a little memo to 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 the board about my thoughts and and looking at what other towns are doing. This is kind of something that's personally interested to me.
And I'll be interested to hear what you come up with.
Okay.
There's someone who don't make my respect, so it's up to the editor.
No, I was gonna say what.
They can't.
What not another town.
Yeah, that's fine.
No, I mean, I'm just, I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just saying that.
Alright.
It's just Casner Creek is so great, I mean, what a awesome, Ca- Casner Creek is such an important ecosystem.
Yes.
I just. I just was shocked that shoreline zoning didn't. Cover most of it, you know, just a little tiny little bit. Well, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Oh, oh, I do follow that, and just as an update to the board, um. The. The town was, and I may have mentioned this before, the town had was granted, um, we applied for and were awarded a. I don't know how you say this, a fellow through the Island Institute, it's gonna be working kind of for the town.
You've introduced him to us.
And, um. No, that that was Reed who was here at the last meeting.
Oh, yeah.
He he works with Mid Coast Council Governance, he's ready, he couldn't, he had a conflict tonight, he did a lot of the the review on this. Um, but separate from that, we have a fellow that is. Through the Island Institute that is gonna be with the town presumably for two years, that's how long the the their fellowship is, and, um. She just started today with her real, like, first day, we, Andy and I met her on Friday and we were talking with her, but. Her focus is resiliency, sustainability, and. Basically. She's gonna be working on the comp plan. And because this is the, uh, Island Institute and their priority is resiliency, we're kinda, you know, make sure we don't, maybe don't overload her, but. We're gonna cheat towards resiliency with the work that she's working on, so stuff like that, I think is, we'll hopefully have some good capacity to. Uh, to work on it, she seems very bright and eager and.
What's what's her first name?
Emerson.
Emerson.
Yes, she, uh, she'll, eventually she'll end up living in Newcastle's where she finally got a, uh. Was able to find housing, but for the time being, she's staying, uh, in the town, she's staying, I don't, I won't get. Too much in her personal business, but she's staying with one of the select board members for a month because there was a gap in in housing, so.
It's funny being a long time resident, I get these phone calls lately.
Yeah.
What it used to be like, kind of thing, now they, things that are filled in here in town. And I have things I took for granted as I went to skater, like down behind Marketplace and places like that. It's interesting how people that have, didn't see it back then.
Yeah.
What's there and all this kind of stuff. It all goes hand in hand.
Yes. Well, I, that's.
So I pulled these two great snow pushing. Um, one is, one is like a big metal shovel and the other is a wooden thing, you know, a snow scoop. From, um, Dr. Griffin's barn. And we're gonna use them to clear off Frog Pond, you know, on Church Street, you know.
Oh, yeah.
What's that called?
Yeah.
Dara?
That was the Damascotta and the Recreational Association's.
Yeah.
Or you could say. Because it's only one, yeah.
You could fight something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sandy and Phil Hatch were the first two that ran that.
I'm not surprised, yeah.
You used to be, they're building something like Lance, yeah, that's when they put, there used to be a tennis court there, little one.
I remember.
Where, on that property?
Oh, yes. Right, but that used to be Lilyfield, yeah, right behind my house.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right, no, wait, in, on Church Street.
She started. No, no, they were in charge of that.
Okay.
This all came down to legality of who, somebody gets hurt on the skating pond's kind of a deal, who's gonna get sued? So it just kind of stopped being used, except for the docks.
Well, and people trying to get big fish. Crapping good fish, but anyways, I'm excited about trying to maintain the pond. Yeah.
But nothing wrong with that, you won't be the first one.
Yeah, anyways, I just.
I know, at least two different houses in town, they allowed the culverts to be dammed. And the people's basement's filled with water during the winter so that we could have a skating ball.
Wow.
One was down by Water Street. And that filled up the basement of the, of the house right there. Where it dips down, going into Water Street, and then the other one was behind Marketplace here. That's when Chatten Street all got filled with water.
Andy's working on, fear goes, making sure the drainage there is is sufficient, so.
Yeah, I don't want to, people back there that have beside themselves.
Do I not wanna go there tonight? No, I do not want.
Let's not do it. Alright. All done?
All done, you wanna make a motion, close up shop?
I make a motion, we close up shop, I guess.
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor? All opposed, there you go.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, we did, we hope to see you guys again.